This meeting is in order. I'm Wayne Brookhart. I'll be presiding tonight in the absence of Mr. Klausert and Mr. Kroll. If we could rise for the stinging of the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America, the Republic of the United States, one nation under God.
I'd like to announce that we did have an executive session tonight to discuss taxpayer issue litigation as well as contractual information from our solicitor. Roll call.
Mr. Brookhart.
Here.
Mrs. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Kroll. Dr. Gattacu.
Here.
Dr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Reichardt.
Here.
Mr. Huron.
Here.
Mr. Vognatz.
Here.
Mr. Klausert.
I'd like to start with any public comment on agenda items only. Mr. Mathias, any presentations or outside guests at this time?
Not under number three. We will have something under number four.
Okay. Start with the proposal for Head Start funds and Linda Marshall.
So just a little background information as Linda gets ready. Danville Area School District hosts your own Head Start program. That's unique and incredibly valuable to the students of the Danville Area School District. Keep in mind that Head Start is funded independently of the rest of the school district. So those funds all come from federal funds. It does not include any local taxpayer dollars. Also is independent of your teacher contract, support contract, and so forth. That is all run independently, but the district serves as the fiscal agent. Linda, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for giving me a chance to talk about Head Start. It's one of my favorite subjects, and I could talk a lot, but not standing here in front of all of you. But just to best explain Head Start, I'm going to take you back to 1964. Vietnam War has been going on for years, and the poverty rate has been at an all-time high. Families were truly struggling at that time. The President Lyndon Johnson declared a war on poverty in the State of the Union address. Programs such as SNAP, medical assistance, and Head Start were developed to assist families in poverty. In 1965, the Head Start programs began nationally, and also right here in Danville is where the program started here. Head Start was and still is designed to break the cycle of poverty by providing low-income families with comprehensive services, and the parents make the decisions for the program. Comprehensive means that we provide a high-quality education, but also health, mental health, social services, and nutrition. We work with the whole family and whole child. Parents are a huge part of the program. They help make decisions on our policy council. Fifty-one percent of the members on our policy council are current parents or guardians. The other forty-nine percent are community members that work with low-income families. Danville Area School District has been the grantee for Danville Head Start for fifty-seven years. The first program started in 1965, just a summer program of eighteen children. Through that time, we have grown throughout the years and switched programs many times to meet the needs of our community. I'm going to give you a packet at the end of this presentation, and you'll see a complete history in there. Is it two? You can't hear. Jeff. Okay. Can you hit the next slide? So under the school district, we have two programs. One is a federal and one is a state-funded program. Federal is Head Start, and state-funded is the pre-K counts, fully provided by the state dollars. Poverty Guidelines, the programs are run exactly the same except for the Poverty Guidelines. Head Start families are for low-income families. A family of four needs to make $27,750 gross a year or less to be eligible for our Head Start program. Pre-K counts families was designed by the working poor, and a family of four needs to make $83,250 or less gross a year. Our service area is the Montour County and the Danville Area School District. What that means is we serve families in Riverside. It's Northumberland County, but they are part of the Danville Area School District, so we can serve them. Montour County, we go out as far as almost Turbitville. You'll have a couple of families out there that go to the Warrior Run School District, but we are able to serve them because they're Montour County. The number of children each program is eighty-five for Head Start and thirty-six for pre-K counts for a total of one hundred and twenty-one children in our service area. So for community awareness and recruitment, we need to have those numbers. We need eighty-five, and we need thirty-six to be at full enrollment, and that's what the federal and state government gave us the money to run the program for. So we do a lot of community awareness, a lot of recruitment. We have never been under-enrolled until the last two years with the COVID, with the pandemic. It's the first time ever in history that we have been under-enrolled. So we really have gotten together and tried to brainstorm many things to do for recruitment. We have done digital advertising, newspaper, radio. We have yard signs. I don't know if you saw them all over the community. We work with our community partners. They hand out for shorts and send home letters to families. And we are also looking into two billboards. We really need to get out there. We need to let families know we're here. We are free, and we are an excellent program. Many families and people in the community think that it is a first-come, first-served to be enrolled in Head Start. That is not the case. There is a selection criteria that is filled out after we take an application on a family. So it goes on age, it goes on income, it goes on needs of the family, and also disability of the child. So it goes on a point system. The points are added up and totaled at the end. The families with the highest points are the highest in need and get in first. If other families would go on a waiting list. So we have children and family outcomes that we need to do. We take data on all of our children and all the families of when they come into our program and when they leave our program. We want to know what they, what did our program do for them? Where did we move those families? And where did we move those children to get ready for kindergarten? We have a creative curriculum. It's a comprehensive, research-based curriculum that we follow. And we also have a social-emotional learning curriculum called Second Step. Our assessment tool is Teaching Strategies Gold. It is where all the information goes on the children. Cody does an amazing job printing out reports and graphs and to help us identify where we need to move kids towards our school readiness goals. We also have a family curriculum called Ready Rosie that is also research-based parenting curriculum to help families with meeting their goals and their needs. We have two family advocates that do home visits. They do goal-setting with families through the family partnership agreement. And we also refer families constantly to community resources to help them. If they need food stamps, if they need help paying their rent, whatever they need, we're there. We'll do whatever it takes to support our families. Okay, Jeff? So program policies and regulations, we follow a lot. We have this nice big book all full of them. But we follow Head Start, we follow pre-K counts, and then we also follow the Danville Area School District. When Danville Area School District doesn't have a policy that we need for Head Start, we develop our own. And that's kind of, you know, we need to meet all of our regs in all of the areas. So one policy that came out that is new to us is the Office of Head Start put out an information memorandum called Competitive Bonuses for the Head Start Workforce. This is something that I never thought that I would really see, but very proud of the Office of Head Start for putting this out to recognize the low incomes that Head Start staff have. We, they, through the pandemic, many nationwide Head Start programs were understaffed, and they were under-enrolled, understaffed, and a lot of people are resigning due to incomes. There are many jobs in the community that are offering fifteen, sixteen, twenty dollars an hour. We do not pay that and cannot pay that, and so a lot of people are leaving. I don't blame them, but it's hard on the program. So they put out this memorandum that they really want to support Head Start staff who've been here with us, to retain staff as much as we can. When you have staff for years, they know the curriculum, they know the kids, they know what they're doing, and it's not constant training. The amount of money that we have wasted or the time that we have wasted training staff over and over is detrimental sometimes to the program. And they also are trying to encourage staff to come work for us. So if there is like a sign-on bonus that we can do. I see that all the time in the community, and I never thought Head Start would ever say that, but it's great that they are acknowledging that. So taking the information memorandum, they developed a discretionary compensation policy. Policy Council approved it on the 27th of July, and it basically just says that we, with the money that we have left over, we have to have a zero balance in August 31st. That's how the program runs year to year. And we have had a lot of staff turnover. We've had not hiring staff due to not having qualified applicants. So we really took a look at it, and the thing that we want to do is we want to do this information memorandum and tell our staff how much we appreciate them, their longevity. We have staff that have been here twenty-three years, down to a couple months, and we want to acknowledge the teachers and all the extra work that they have done, the management staff, definitely through the COVID and the last year. So a proposal of a policy is to work with the superintendent, the business manager, to come up with dollar amounts to do a discretionary compensation and a sign-on bonus for staff. It is in your packet, the full policy, as well as my plan for the dollar amounts for the staff members and how much it's going to cost overall. So you will get all of that. The sign-on bonuses I have in there per classification of position as well as the discretionary compensation money. So it goes by number of years. If you're here one to three, you get this much depending on your position, and then it's all in your packet for you to read. We do have a lot of vacant positions, and we have had resignations even as today. It is heartbreaking to see some of these staff leave us, but you can't fault if they leave for $20,000 more than what I am paying them. A teacher coming to me starts at $34,000, and that is just for this school year. It has not been that way. It was like thirty, thirty-two with a bachelor's degree. A teacher coming to the Danville Area School District and being hired at a bachelor's makes $54,000. That is the difference that we're looking at for Head Start and the school district, and that goes for all of our positions. So we do have several vacant positions that we will, that we are advertising. Resumes are coming in slow, but we do have some. And I think too, like, once we get the staff here, they love our program. It is a family, and it is, you can't fault the difference you make in young kids and with the whole family, and it's just, it's amazing program. So I would really like if you just take into consideration the policy and the proposal.
So Linda will pass out the information and include the policy that she spoke of. Please keep in mind that the payment that she discussed is differentiated by position and by years of service. So a teacher who's been here ten years would get a different amount than a teacher who's been here three years, who would get a different amount than a support staff member, and so forth. So, and the objective here is that this would be on your agenda for approval on August 8th. Any questions for Linda?
Thank you. The next subject we have under number four is the Superintendent Search RFPs. We discussed this at our most recent meeting. We've received four proposals. The board has been provided with those proposals from our district office. We have a proposal from Ray and Associates, one from Edward Albert, who is the head of the Pennsylvania Association of Small and Rural Schools. I believe he still is. Is that correct, Mr. Mathias? I know he was.
I don't know.
You're not sure either? Okay, sorry. And Mr. Mathias, and the Brown proposal, which is in association with a company called Hazard, Young, and Atia, which is a national search firm. We have to decide how we're going to proceed. We, I believe at the last meeting, had a variety of perspectives, but one thing it seemed we had in common is we wanted to move. If there's anybody that feels differently than that, certainly let us know. Any comments from our board members? Any paths that you would like to see us take? Any comments about any of the proposals? We talked with Mr. Mathias. He did know we were going to talk about this with him in our presence, so he understands what our process is.
And I think we need to move quickly, and I mean, I think we have Dr. Mathias here. Seems like a good choice from my perspective.
I agree with you 100%.
The only thing we can't do tonight is vote, but whatever comments you have or whatever path you'd like to make the board aware of, or, most of us are here. Any other thoughts on for candidates for the search? The costs are significantly different, and this is all public. The national firms are much more expensive. I don't think you could give the exact dollar figures because I don't have them on my mind right now here in front of me, but they're significantly more expensive than Mr. Albert, who's a statewide director, at least he was, and Mr. Mathias, who's here in our presence. So if cost is an issue, they're pretty wide range from what we've seen. Anyone else? Any thoughts?
I think we discussed that despite the difference in cost, the gain is not that much, right? So it's not like the expensive ones have, give us a lot more choices than the, so it makes sense to us to stay with Mr. Mathias and proceed. Am I right?
Okay. One thing I can say with a bit of experience is if we're looking to pull from a New Jersey or New York market, that's where the two national firms come in. If that's not something we're really looking to pull from, to pay the extra money doesn't, to me, make an awful lot of sense.
I mean, the other thought I have in the context of how to frame this out and move forward, we do have to come to some consensus and approach of qualifications and a lot of those details because built-in all that is going to be, yes, we need to move fast. I'm a supporter of that, but we need to be smart about moving fast. And that doesn't mean that if we don't get the right candidate that we just make a decision because we're running out of time. And I think we very much have to be cognizant of that level of detail and how we approach that. And so in the framework of, of course, when it works well, life's always easy, right? But we got to think about those contingency plans, which is, hey, what if it's going to, I mean, we're, say, packaged in slightly different ways, everybody's aware. This is probably not prime picking time to go find a new superintendent when school starts in a month. So I think it behooves us to think long and hard about that strategy. So I am jumping past the question, but I think it's worthy of us to all have this in our thought process that says, what if we don't get somebody? First round, second round, third round. What if we go the whole school year and we don't get the right candidate? Are we just going to pick one because, ugh, we got to? And where does that fit with the impact on Mr. Mathias? And it could be a two-pronged approach, you know? If it goes great, and Mr. Mathias, which I'm an advocate for, to do that, if he can afford the time and it fits and all that. But I do think it's a thing that we really need to have a conversation on, of what it looks like and what we're after.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that. That was in the back of my mind also, is that it's choosing the person that's going to do this with the firm, and then what do we want that ad to look like? What are our goals in terms of who we're trying to attract? And this is prime time if we're looking for somebody for next year, but it's not for this year, that's for sure. So point duly noted and well taken. Exactly right. Any other comments? I've heard nothing other than Mr. Mathias moving forward with him. Is there anyone that wants to have any further discussion on what will appear in the agenda next week? Sounds like as we set the agenda, Mr. Mathias, your name will be on it, and we probably, I know you had set the 11th as the date to get an ad out. So provided you're approved next week, which we certainly assumed that you would be, we probably ought to sit with you about what that ad should look like.
Exactly right. That would be the plan, that after your meeting next week, we will have a conversation talking about timeline, criteria, involvement, all of those things. So totally agree.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, so are you saying at next meeting we're going to have that discussion, or after next meeting when we vote on?
Well, you have to approve me first.
Right.
But our original plan was get the RFPs so you had this discussion tonight, then whoever is selected would know they're at least on the agenda. Now, that, of course, we know doesn't guarantee anything, but would be on the agenda and would then be here able to, once you hit the gavel, to close the meeting on Monday, take you back and have a detailed conversation about how to proceed. So yes, Monday night, the 8th, plan to stay and talk about all the things you discussed. Thank you.
And Terry, are you getting all these things for the agenda? I'm not a great note-taker, and this is new. You're okay? If you need me to slow down, let me know.
That's why she's sitting right here.
Okay. Okay. Next, item five, Curriculum Committee Curriculum Procedures Presentation. Harry Mathias, and we will introduce, I know some of you have already met Tracy Crum. Tracy is here working with us on curriculum temporarily along with Harry, so the floor is yours.
So Tracy and I are going to tag-team a presentation for you. I mentioned to you several weeks ago that as we move forward here, there's some things that I think I can present to you that could be informational and so forth moving forward. Just so you know, some things on my plan are to talk to you about budget, to talk to you about how to look at enrollment and enrollment trends, how you staff those things, data, presentations of data that are student-related and program-related. So over the next few months, I do plan on making a number of presentations on a few things that I think can help you. And if you don't agree... can help you. And if you don't agree, feel free to tell me that. But the first of those is curriculum. Now, Mr. Brookhart referred to Tracy Kroom. That's Tracy right there. Tracy and I have known each other a long time. She was a special ed teacher, middle school principal at Lewisburg for a long time. Central Columbia, we were able to steal her in about 2011 to be our curriculum coordinator. So she served in this exact job for about six years. We worked hand in hand, communicate extremely well. She's just wonderful to work with. And then she left Central to be a superintendent. So she has a considerable amount of experience. Please know why she's here. You originally brought me in here, into replace, to some extent, Dr. Bickhart. About three weeks later, you then called me to replace Dr. Boyle. And when that happened, we needed to replace me, if that makes sense. Mr. Klausert gave me some latitude to make the call, and I think we're extremely fortunate to have someone with Tracy's ability here in Danville to help our kids. I know I'm happy to have her here. So we have a presentation for you. I will lead off, and then she will jump in and take some of the details. I handed a PowerPoint to her and to Mr. Ryan. She then edited it. So if it goes to a slide that I don't recognize, I'll be calling on her. So Mr. Ryan, go ahead. So, most important slide you will ever see in your life. Now, keep in mind, I was an administrator for 25 years. I was in school, you know, worked in schools for 35 years. I was superintendent for 19 years. And when you're a superintendent that long, there is very little that happens in the school that you don't have some effect on. When you're brand new, it's impossible to hit everything at once. There's just so many things going on. But over time, you can start to look at all the details. And one thing we prided ourselves on in my past job is we studied things. I was a math teacher, so I looked at data. We looked at things and studied things we decided not to do. We did things and found out they didn't work. So we jettisoned them and moved on to other things. So when I talk to you about things, these are based on my experiences. And, you know, I think to some extent, things that have been successful. So there are four bullets on that screen, and the slide is called "What Makes a Great Academic School." I hope that's your goal. If it isn't, we need to talk a little bit because that's why we're here. It's why we're here. It's our mission. Number one is what we're here to talk about in this presentation is a high-quality curriculum. That means lots of stuff. It's easy to say. It's kind of hard to get to. It's a lot of work. But what a high-quality curriculum is, in my definition, is it is a rigorous, meaning academically challenging, and relevant, meaning can be applied to real-world situations. And by the way, why is that so important? Because it maximizes student retention, it maxim, or optimizes student academic achievement. There are clear things that teachers can do that maximize academic achievement, and making the curriculum both rigorous and relevant are two of them. That curriculum has to be aligned to Pennsylvania academic standards. This is something that Mrs. Kroom was superb at. It's something you have to analyze. When we would implement our curriculum, we would implement an assessment system. We would then look at how those two things match together. And what you would commonly find when you thought you were doing a really good job, yet found scores not where you wanted them, was that the alignment was not as tight as it could be to the academic standards. You may be spending a little bit of time on something else, not focused specifically on those standards. I will tell you that there are a lot of academic standards, and it takes a lot of time to get through them. You don't have time to mess around. A teacher does not have time to go off on some divergent path on, you know, something that is not related to the standards. If you do, you're not going to get all of those done. One thing Mrs. Kroom and I are doing this year in particular is not only looking at curriculum as it's being written and edited and so forth, but we are going through a very, kind of a tight process where we are mapping to make sure the standards are being met. We will bring things to you, knowing full well that we may have to come back because it may be missing something here or redundant on something else. Quality instruction. This, by the way, teachers are where the rubber hits the road. Quality teaching is what matters in schools, and having quality instruction matters. And you see me define it here as instructional techniques aligned to student academic achievement and retention. You heard me say it earlier. There is a lot of research that there are certain things that teachers do that optimize student retention and academic achievement. In my opinion, those things are, ought to be what we stress. It ought to be what we identify. It ought to be what we teach our teachers in our professional development. And it ought to be what we measure when we go in and do our evaluation process. High expectations for performance. Expectations matters. I did a commencement speech on that one time. Expectations matters. It matters if you're a coach. It matters if you're a mechanic. It matters if you're a teacher. If you walk into a class and you believe that your teacher wants you to do well, they have high expectations for you. That matters a lot. The way you measure that is not only in an attitude and a culture, but you also measure it in your district assessments. Remember, you are to assess the kids and what you're teaching them. Those assessments have to be written at such a level that they communicate high expectations to the students. You will see a lot of schools who think they have a great curriculum, but then when you look at their assessments, those assessments that are a lower level. And that says to the kids very quickly, yeah, we're going to do some stuff in class, but what really matters is you memorize some things, that we don't ask you to think. Also, in a system that I think works the best, you collect a lot of data. You collect data on the curriculum. You collect data on the instruction. You collect data on the programs themselves. And that data can be analyzed, both in the aggregate, meaning across the grade or school system, and individual student data. I always use the metaphor, you walk into the doctor's office, what's the first thing that happens? Well, they take you to the scale, and then they get your height, and then your blood pressure, and then your respiration. And then, then you walk into a room and somebody sits down with you. How's it, how do you feel? What hurts? Have you taken this medication, that medication? And this is 82 things that happen before you ever see the doctor. Why do they do that? I hope the answer is that they are collecting data, and that that data actually matters. It matters in the analysis. It matters, it matters, doctor, never mind. It matters in the analysis, and it matters in the care. And that then leads to the last bullet, which quality, great academic schools provide help for students in need. Now, I say it that way, but keep in mind, you can define all students as students in need. Students who perhaps struggle to understand a certain concept are certainly in need. And they would, and the district should provide help to them to get them to a level of proficiency. Students who are high-achieving students are students in need because we want them to excel even higher. We may have the next Neil Armstrong in our school, and we need that student to excel. We also, by the way, may have the next Bruce Springsteen. And I'd love to see that as well. So we want to be able to provide help for students in need. And I use the word all the time, if you've been around me, I use the word customized. Customized instruction based on student data. That's the qualities of a great academic school. Go ahead. So there are some resources here. By the way, I'll send you this presentation tomorrow, Mr. Ryan. Remember me to send, remind me to send this to everybody tomorrow. 22 PA Code Chapter 4, you're going to see me refer to that. There's also the PDE website. The Standards Aligned System, PDE, has another resource that has all the standards in it. I want to go back to the first bullet. You hear us from time to time talk about the Pennsylvania School Code. That isn't this. The School Code are those laws that have been passed by the General Assembly and signed by the governor. What then happens is, there is a body called the State Board of Education, which comes up with regulations, further level of law, for schools to follow. When you hear us talk about chapters, those are the regulations. And even though it says PA Code, this is not the School Code, it's regulations. Other regulations are like Special Education is Chapter 16, Gifted Education is Chapter 14, Vocational Technical Education is Chapter 339, and so forth. You'll hear us talk about that from time to time. Go ahead. So, under Chapter 4, this is what it says. And these are the regulations dealing with curriculum. It is the policy of the board, that by the way, means the State Board of Education, not you, that the local curriculum, that's you, be designed by school entities to achieve the academic standards under Chapter 4, Section 12, and any additional standards that you want to add. You can actually add standards if you want, but you minimally must teach and assess all the standards under Chapter 412. Well, what are they? Go ahead. Here is Chapter 4, number 12. And I'm pulling it directly out, and I've, you know, cut a little bit of definition out, but here's what they are. The academic standards, school entities may develop, expand, or improve existing academic standards in the following areas. Here are the areas. Science and Technology, Environment and Ecology, Social Studies, Arts and Humanities, Career Ed in Work, Health Safety and Phys Ed, Family Consumer Science, English Language Arts, and Mathematics. You are required to teach to all students all the standards in these areas, and to assess them so that you have an understanding whether or not they are proficient in those areas. You are required to do it. This is the law in Pennsylvania. When you got elected, you put your right hand up and said, and took an oath, that you would follow the law in Pennsylvania. This is the law in Pennsylvania. Go ahead. Then, and by the way, there's a lot of parts of Chapter 4, but here's the part under Local Assessments. And I point this out because it's commonly lessened in its importance it should not be. Each school entity shall design an assessment system. This, by the way, means the tests that your teachers give the kids, in addition to some other stuff. You could use some nationalized, standardized things and so forth. To do the following. One, to determine the degree to which students are achieving the academic standards, this is that individual student data piece. The school entity shall provide assistance to students not attaining the academic standards at the proficient level or better. You're required to have programs in place to help kids that don't hit the proficient level in the standards. You are to use the assessment results to improve curriculum and instructional practices. My God, how about that? Actually using the data to improve what you're teaching and how you teach it. Wow. To provide information requested by the department regarding the achievement of the academic standards. And what this basically means is if the Department of Ed says, hey, what are you doing, Danville? You have to tell them. You have to prove that you're doing what they want you to do. And provide summary information, including results of assessments under this section to the general public. Remember I said earlier that I was going to do a data, we are going to do a data presentation? We are going to do an extensive data presentation on how well your students, not individuals, but in the aggregate, are doing on the standards. Next slide. This is now Mrs. Kroom's turn.
I'd like to add to, we can expand them or improve upon them. We do that a lot of times. So for example, Art and Humanities, their standards are so general that it's hard.
Is that inter on?
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Their standards are, I know, I'm talking with my hands. Those standards are so general, sometimes it's really hard to map curriculum to that. Well, they are national standards. And so they are national standards for some of those areas that we like to grab, and we might, we might use them as well. Remember also, you have AP courses. They have standards. You might have International Baccalaureate courses, things like that. Have other standards that you can use. So I wanted to just share with you, and I know this is kind of hard to see, but this is an example of sixth-grade language arts, which is something we're bringing to you in another month, month and a half. So under Language Arts, you will see that there is a standard area, and the standard area is the same standard area for K to 12. It's the actual standard that is different per grade level. And when we talk about large number of standards, sixth-grade language arts by itself has 54 standards. That's a lot. That's a lot. And that, that was kind of what we're trying to show you, that when we write curriculum, we have to map these standards, and we have to make sure that we are covering these standards. You will, like, you will be able to, if you, when you get this presentation, you can click on any of this if you want to. But you have standards all the way down, speaking, writing, listening, in language arts. So those are just, I just wanted to show you where they were and to kind of talk a little bit about them so you're aware of the number. All right. Jeff, we'll go to the next slide. Okay. So what are, what are teachers doing now? In the summer of 2020, now if you remember, that was the COVID summer, Danville started an extensive curriculum writing process. Teachers have been writing curriculum for two years now. And it's now at a point where it's time to bring some curriculum to you to be approved. Not all the curriculum is going to be done, and as Mr. Mathias said, we are going to bring you completed curriculum. After that, the teachers are to work on their curriculum, to use it. They might want to change things. We're going to put a process in place that has them bring the curriculum back to you for approval, because you need to see all the curriculum, and you need to approve the curriculum. So they are currently writing for all courses. I'm going to show you the format that's coming to you. It's going to be a cover sheet for each course, and then there's going to be curriculum maps that are broken into units, and it will be standard-aligned. This is an example of what the cover sheet, and I'm sticking with the sixth-grade ELA right now. So every cover sheet will have the title on it. What's really important is to have that board approval date. We want to know if your curriculum hasn't been approved in 10, 12 years. That's really important to know. Or if a course just needs to be upgraded all the time. You need to be aware of that. And then the credit hours really just go for the high school. So an example of a cover sheet, and they all look very similar. The sixth-grade English Language Arts focuses on mastery of the PA Core standards for English Language Arts. Sixth-grade ELA aims to improve students' abilities in the areas of reading, writing, listening, and speaking. The focus is on vocabulary, grammar, literature, composition, and research skills. Every cover sheet's going to be very simple. So if, let's just say, we are talking about art, and we've used the national standards, then it would include focus on mastery of the PA standards as well as the national standards. So you will know exactly where the standards are coming from. And then it goes on to talk about those general areas, and most of the time, it will list the units in that cover sheet. We felt there, we, there needed to be something when parents went to the website to look at curriculum, something simple to say, this is what the course is. Okay? So next slide. This is an example of what is included in a curriculum map. And I will tell you, it's extensive. It's extensive. So the timeframe means, how many days is this unit going to be taught? That's really important. And you don't, you don't have to stick to that exactly, but we need those timeframes. It is really easy to kind of go off script, and a teacher gets excited about a project, and a, and a five-day unit becomes 10. And now we're talking about not being able to cover the standards. So that is a piece of data we can look at if we're, if we're struggling to achieve in that area.
And if you don't mind, picture you're a brand-new teacher coming into the district.
Oh, yeah.
Brand-new. You just got hired. Yes, you're going to have a lot of colleagues helping you, but this timeframe is very much going to help you. Okay, is this something that's a week long, or is this something three weeks long? You have a sense of that before you start.
The next is the student learning outcomes. That's just the gist of the big ideas we are going to want the student to come out with in this particular unit. Essential questions. These are questions teachers ask at the beginning of a unit that you hope to accomplish at the end of the unit. And the essential questions are really important basis for this assessment that the kids get at the end. This is when, we don't always need to give a written test as an assessment. A project can assess those essential questions. Content, of course, will include the content for that union, for that unit. The assessments, whether it is a test, whether it is a project, whatever. The assessments, whether it is a test, whether it is a project, whatever that might be. The standards. Here is where we are mapping all the standards. We are going to keep a document with all the standards. I am not going to guarantee you in the very first run, there might be some missing, but as we map it, we'll figure that out. Because again, after this is approved, this might not be the last, it shouldn't be the last time you see this course. It should come back to you if any adjustments need to be made. For example, a new textbook series. This should be adjusted, this needs to be adjusted. The key vocabulary is very important in units. It's what students grasp on. It's one of the first things that students are taught. And then, of course, the materials and resources. Are they going to use online resources? Is there a textbook? So you will have all of this in a map. And remember, every course is going to have four, five, 10 maps, depending on the course. So this next slide is an example, I'm staying with sixth grade ELA, because that's the first, those are the first courses you're getting. So there's an example of what a teacher has created. You can just kind of look down that. And I, I cut off the bottom, which is the assessment, but that's the gist of what that will look like. So when you, you receive that, you know what you're looking at. Okay?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Because I've been thinking about this since I first saw one of these a year or two back. When you look at the assessments itself, are they also mapped to the standards? Are you able to say, this assessment is assessing these four standards?
In the perfect world, they would be mapped to the standards.
Because I've never seen that, and I was just always curious. Because that seems like what it should be?
It should be. It absolutely should be. And when teachers, remember, when teachers are creating their assessments, they should be using their essential questions, and the essential questions should be coming from the standards. But have we physically mapped this? We haven't done that yet. But that is, there's software that does that. And that is in the perfect situation what does happen.
Because I feel like I should be able to look at this and say, okay, so this unit is going to be about these five standards. I can read these five standards and understand what they're trying to get at. So when I look up at the learning objectives, the learning outcomes, I can see how those are pointing towards those standards that you're trying to teach, and the materials you pick also dovetail with that. And then I should be able to look at the assessment and say, okay, the reason we're doing iReady Diagnostic 1 is because it tests, I can't see quite, CC1460.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what it should be, but I will tell you, again, writing the curriculum is your first step. So there's a lot of, once you get the curriculum written, it's really important to work with lesson planning with teachers. And then we're talking about instructional strategies, which when we get to the comp plan, I'm going to share some things with you. And then the assessments, teaching teachers how to make good assessments is, it's huge. It's huge. So, yes, down the road, that is absolutely the direction it should go.
And this is why you here is telling you this is a process, and it's a multiple-year process.
Yeah.
We, we, here we go. At Central Columbia, when we were there one year, the whole emphasis was writing the assessments.
Right.
So each administrator had a content area where we work with the teachers to, to instruct and then oversee their assessments, to make sure rubrics were written, they met the standards, they were open-ended, they were high-level, okay? Bloom's taxonomy, high-level. It was a whole year.
Yeah.
But that was the emphasis. And it got exactly to what you're saying. You, you could take an ag course at Central Columbia, and you were, you were expected to write to a prompt that showed your ability to comprehend a concept in agriculture. And that, you heard, you saw the slide earlier, high expectations, high expectations in every class, every grade. So when you walked into that school, you were expected to think. And if you weren't going to do that, you were going to have to work hard.
Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I've just looked at a few of these in the past, and not been able to figure out.
You're going, what the heck? Right, exactly.
Why did they pick that tool as the thing?
And, and, and if you don't have a strong standard line curriculum to start with, it's really hard to take the next step. So this is where we are right now, and they're writing. And so far, it looks, looks pretty good. All right. So now, this process is probably not the process you're going to follow. Mr. Mathias and I talked about it, but I put it here anyway, because reviewing curriculum is daunting, and it just takes a lot of all of your time to do, because there is hundreds and hundreds of pages over the course of two years. So my original, and then Mr. Mathias spoke to me, my original proposal, what I'm used to, is that we are bringing grades six to eight ELA curriculum to you first. So we are going to bring you three grade levels of English language arts to you first. And I think you're going to get it at the end of September to approve in October. The, my original thought was, on the third Monday of the month, you would have access to those curriculum maps and cover sheets that I just shared with you. And remember, what I shared with you was one five-day unit, so I want you to remember, 180 days of school. So you will, there will be a cover sheet and the whole course for sixth grade ELA. You will have that available to you on, on some sort of electronic means. We're not there yet, but we're going to get there. I have a meeting about that tomorrow. You will be the only ones that have access to that, for you to review and for you to look at it. Now, prior to you getting that, the department leads have worked with the teachers to write the curriculum. And before the curriculum's to be sent to the principal for a review, the department lead is to take a look at the curriculum and look for, remember, a physics teacher might not look at a chemistry map and know if the content's correct. But the purpose is to look at the materials and to kind of eyeball it, make sure everything looks pretty good. Next, the lead sends it to the principal. The principal is then to review it as well. Make sure it looks good. At that point, then the director of curriculum instruction, me, right now, will then look at all that curriculum, and it looks good. Once we are, we think this is great, the materials look good, everything looks good, it'll be posted for you, and we'll send something out to you and say it's available. So that is definitely going to happen. My proposal to Mr. Mathias was, on the fourth Monday of the month, a curriculum committee, which I, I now know you're going to do a, of the whole. But I just want to throw this out to you to just keep in your mind for the future, if it turns to be, out to be a lot. We want to bring a teacher, we want to bring teachers in every month to present their curriculum. The teachers and the principals are going to present their curriculum. They are the ones to answer your questions. They are the ones that we want you talking to. So they are going to present the curriculum. This was my schedule, but I don't think we're going to follow that. If you want to go on to the next one, it'll be, it'll be the fourth month we'll post, the fourth Monday of the month we'll post it, and then at this meeting every month.
Can I, excuse me, can I interrupt just a second before you go too far with this?
Sure.
Just to back up, I think you said there may be too much of this for the committee of the whole. This may actually have to go to separate curriculum.
And that was.
Let me, allow me to explain.
I remember you were back here, you talked about it.
Mr. Brookhart's right. A month ago, I sat right there, and I alluded to the fact that curriculum, you would see many, many, many maps, and perhaps it would be overwhelming. Left that meeting, and Mrs. Kroom started to talk to me about the idea she's now laying out, where it's in these kind of tightly defined, you just heard her say, grade six, seven, eight, language arts. We're now talking about three maps, not piles of them. When I bounced it off Mr. Klausert, he very much, now again, you're the board, he's one member, but he very much wanted to respect the concept of committee of the whole if you could, because he saw the value in that, you know? All nine of you get to see everything at once. So that's why you see her talking about two things. The one came out of what I said about piles of curriculum. Mrs. Kroom's come up with this idea that, let's bring some teachers and talk to you, but if it's three planned courses at a time, perhaps that's better handled in committee of the whole. And again, again, this is your decision.
Well, the agenda is set by the board president and the superintendent. So if you talk with Mr. Klausert, that's fine with me, unless other board members have something to say. It's fine. I don't know what they anticipate, Harry and Tracy, I don't. You talk about how much it will be.
I just, I just wanted to explain how we got here. In the end, it's your call.
No, it's fine.
And I mean, we can try the committee of the whole.
Right.
And see how it goes, and if it ends up being too much information, I mean, I don't want you to be stuck here all night either.
Right.
Listening to curriculum and, and, and when you have other committees to discuss. So we can start, the first is three, three years of ELA, that's not bad. The second one I wanted to bring was K to eight math, but maybe we'll break that into smaller and keep it in the committee of the whole. And if, as we get down the road, you think, wow, you know what, let's, let's have a smaller group, and then at the committee of the whole, that smaller group of board members explains to the board the curriculum they saw, the questions they asked, how they felt about it, that, that kind of process.
Yes, I'm thinking, this is, curriculum is one of many, many things that we do in the committee of the whole. So, you know, if, given what you tell me, it looks like the curriculum itself can take many sessions on its own, without any interference. So, so we had to find a way to have time. So actually, I meant to talk to Mr. Mathias.
So, Mr. Mathias, we weren't starting until the October. So you have time.
We'll have time.
So maybe you want to discuss this next week?
Absolutely.
That's, that's great, yeah. Yeah, I don't have any direction either way. I'd like to see it go. I just didn't want to see you modify.
Yeah.
Too quickly. Okay?
Okay. Again, so I just wrote that the board would prefer to do a curriculum meeting, so we'll work on that, and you can decide. Now, once you have approved this by the board, it is going on the website the next day. We keep, we'll have folders of the website of each of those areas that Mr. Mathias showed you, ELA and math, all of those standard areas. And then we'll put the courses in there, they'll be very well-marked, and parents will be able to see them. And, and then we just keep following that process. And again, three years from now, two years from now, when all of your curriculum is approved, now what you're just looking at is adjustments. And it's the same process that we follow, you have new courses. It's the exact same process, and it becomes a system. And then that system is, is what you follow. And probably somewhere down the road, I'm going to bring you a curriculum writing process for you to approve. I think the comprehensive plan requires that. So, okay, is there any, oh, let's see if I have anything else up here. What else I have? Oh, no, that's okay. Oh, so that, just like I said, so requests for new courses or current course updates, same process, go to the principal and the director of curriculum. A teacher says, hey, you know, I want to change my materials, I want to change up my units, whatever they want to do. Or, I want to do a new course. The principal and the director of curriculum meet with that teacher, and then the principal and director of curriculum meet with the superintendent. And if he thinks this is a good plan, then that teacher moves forward, and it, they write their curriculum, the exact same process we're following. And that is approved by you no later than January, because especially at the high school level, I think in January is when the course, the course selection guys go out to publish. So it's real important to get those things done right after the new year, even if it's a, a revision for the following year, so teachers can get the materials they need. It's really important in this process, we, we want to put a process together that then you follow all along, and it just becomes very clean and very easy to do. Okay? Okay, now, any questions? Okay. So when we, you'll let me know how we're doing it, and I will follow up. And I want, the two people I have right now, Dr. Gatachu and Dr. Green, were on the curriculum committee before, so I will keep you on that. And then if there's anyone else who would want to be on it, let me know. Okay? And I'll, I'll email you out, we'll find out there. But I just wanted to remind you who was on that. Okay? Okay? All right, I'm also here.
I'm sorry.
Comprehensive, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, Mr. Bognitz is also on the curriculum committee.
Are you on it as well?
I don't know if he still wants to be, but.
I am, but that is okay, because I, you know, I'm on the finance committee also, plus, you know, Act 93.
Oh, well, I'll keep you busy.
Hall of Fame, so I'm, yeah.
You'll beg off for now.
Yeah, I'm okay.
All right, comprehensive plan. It is time for the district to write their new comprehensive plan. It was originally due this coming November, which means it would have been already written, and you would be approving it as we speak, but with COVID, the state pushed it off to March. This is, been an interesting process. I have on that committee, I have, again, Dr. Gatachu, I have Mr. Brookhart and Dr. Green. Are you guys on comprehensive plan? Okay. Okay. All right. So comprehensive plan update. So I want to remind you, and you probably already know this, that the comprehensive plan process has six sections that we have to have a plan for. You have a current comprehensive plan, you have had one for years. And these six sections are profile, core foundations, assurances, needs assessment, action planning, and plan submission. What's really important to remember about the comprehensive plan is that those needs assessments are questions the district answers about assessment, achievement. Pretty much, you answer questions in this portal that we use, and that portal then develops your goals. We, we talk about, we've been in education way too long, and Mr. Brookhart, you will say this too, 25 years ago, I will, no, 29 years ago, Central Columbia and their comprehensive plan put investigate year-round school. I'll never forget that.
Told you there's practically nothing.
Yeah, investigate year-round school. Because at that time, people put in their comprehensive, or it was strategic plan then, investigate turf for the football stadium, or, you know, build a new high school. Those days are gone. These are very, very directed goals from the state, based on how you answer these questions. For example, curriculum, you have to answer, is your curriculum completely written? If it is, that won't be a goal. In our case, we know that'll be a goal, because we have curriculum. Assessment, perfect question. That will be a question about the assessment system. And so they will populate the goals. So that's just something to remember about the comprehensive plan. Your current comprehensive plan, that was last year, had these five goals. Multi-tiered system of support, and what that is, is how you support your students who struggle, or how you want to provide more for your students who are, who are capable and who might be advanced. Social emotional learning competencies, career pathways. So I want you thinking about what you're hearing and seeing in the schools, why is that there? This is your current plan. APL, instructional skills and management. When Mr. Mathias talked about that second bullet, instruction being the most important thing, the rubber meets the road there, this was one of the things as a goal, and I want to remind you, we have been in COVID for two years, the comprehensive plan's only three years. So as we do our needs assessment, it's going to be interesting, because a lot of things stopped over two years, and it did everywhere. And then finally, PBIS. So I'd like to start, before we talk about the new plan, you have a current plan. So I would like each of the principals to just give you a quick update on where their building is with these goals. So Lee, want to start?
Thank you and good evening. At Liberty Valley, under the MTSS, we currently have RTI in place. And this year, as we come to having the schedule together, we're excited about the, the progress we're making in those areas. Again, with scheduling and also with some tier-two interventions that we have for our students. SCL, we are going to be in year two of implementation of responsive classroom. Last year, we did five, teachers were trained, and did a pilot, and this year we have about 25 teachers who are going to be trained. Amy Willoughby, who is not here tonight, will have five teachers as part of that program at the primary school. So we are in year two of implementation of responsive classroom. Career pathways doesn't really apply, but we do do some things with the guidance counselor, working with students at every grade level with the, some of the work and post-secondary plans. APL, as induction, as the induction coordinator for the school district, I would like to see APL, it's still out there in our plans. I like to see, I would say probably about a year ago, we talked about APL being offered to our year one, two, or three teachers. And then if we have additional seats available in training, then possibly we can offer that to some other teachers that are interested in doing that. But I would say, if my timeline is correct, we had about, two years ago, we offered that to a lot of our teachers, and they took, they took part in the APL training, which happened here in this school. It was pretty powerful training. And lastly is the PBIS. At Liberty Valley, you may have heard this before, we forge our best selves, best being, be respectful, encourage kindness, safety first, and try your hardest. be respectful, encourage kindness, safety first, and try your hardest. So we are continuing, uh, with that program at the Liberty Valley, in our middle school.
Does it stand for?
Yeah.
Their names. Honestly, their names, their actual names.
Anastasia Perry and the L, I think is dead.
I think it's dead, yeah.
I'll stick with APL.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, middle school, Mr. Snowver?
Thank you. Um, so MTSS or RTI, we, uh, continue to have a fairly robust RTI program at the middle school. Um, students have the opportunity every marking period in ELA, uh, language arts and, and math, to, uh, receive, uh, intervention support. That would be with their classroom teacher, the teacher that they have for the core subject. They would also then, um, based on data, right now, I'm still currently placing students to start the year based on last year's data. And then as the year progresses, our classroom teachers look at our diagnostic data, look at classroom performance data, and then, uh, from marking period two, three, and four, uh, they make recommendations of which students ought to, uh, or would best benefit from the remediation, um, that we offer. Uh, we also offer enrichment, um, in science and social studies and students can be placed in that for a marking period or a semester, and that's really just schedule-based. But in the enrichment, uh, again, as, uh, Mr. Mathias had alluded to, even our stronger performing students need some support, so maybe at their level, and that might be, you know, at a higher level, of how do we, uh, you know, make their educational experience more robust and meaningful for them. Um, our social emotional learning, uh, we are currently in our, uh, full year rollout year, uh, for our positive action SEL curriculum that we piloted last year in one classroom in grade six, one in seven and one in eight. So those teachers that piloted the classroom have spent the summer writing the SEL curriculum. Um, and we are prepared to train staff on that at the beginning of the school year, uh, during our professional development. And the goal is, uh, you know, using that written curriculum, we will have, uh, our sec, our positive action SEL curriculum in every homeroom classroom, uh, this year, multiple lessons per week, uh, being delivered on that SEL curriculum. Um, career pathways, while it doesn't, uh, directly pertain to the middle school, we are, uh, I'm working with Mr. Nguyen here, we're, uh, actually going to be visiting a program, uh, later this week, uh, to look at how does the middle school in that district support, uh, growth towards pathways in the high school? So how can we tailor our program and some of our electives or even in, within the core subjects to, uh, start looking at the pathways, progression, and how, uh, at the middle school level, we can support what they're going to be doing at the high school? Um, as, uh, Mr. Gump alluded to, we do have some APL trained teachers. We got a little sidetracked with APL when we hit COVID and some things were canceled. Uh, we, we did have a number of teachers that had gotten, uh, trained in it and I have a list of other teachers that are interested in becoming APL trained. Uh, so once we get that back, we're going to open that up and I do have a list of teachers that are very interested in doing it. And as, uh, Lee mentioned, we're going to certainly, with available seating, focus on some of our newer teachers, uh, and then open up where that seating is available to the veteran teachers who have not yet been trained in it. And finally, uh, at the middle school, our PBIS program, we use the acronym RISE, Respect, Integrity, Success, and Empathy. Um, and that's kind of a, a play on the fact that at the middle school, we constantly talk about how we rise to, uh, whatever challenges are in front of us. It, it really came into play, um, 11 years ago when the middle school went underwater and we kind of rallied around, we're going to rise to this and we're going to overcome this and we're going to work together. And, you know, for those of you that remember, we, uh, spent two years working out of the old DES building, uh, as that, uh, whole process worked. So that's, uh, you know, you, you talk about history of organizations and those, you know, the stories and the things that draw people together. That was certainly a powerful, uh, thing that brought our middle school team together and we still refer back to that experience and we use that as kind of a stepping point to how do we get our students to rise to the occasions or the challenges that are in front of them. So we have a ticket system, we, uh, incorporate all different kinds of incentives and prizes. Um, we, uh, I think are finding a great deal of success with it at the middle school. And middle school is, uh, you know, a challenging age, but it's hard to find what, what really motivates students to, you know, want to work towards some sort of goal or prize. Um, and we've got a great, great PBIS team that works hand-in-hand with our culture committee, which we also have at the middle school. And we've, you know, really developed a lot of fun activities and ways to, uh, meet the students where they're at and find ways to excite them about what we're doing at the middle school. Does anyone have any questions regarding the middle school?
Yeah, let me ask one, one quick question, Mr. Snowver.
Sure, Mr. Brookhart.
Uh, when you remediate, number one, is that done during the day, at the end of the day?
So, uh, it's done during one of the three specials periods that the students have in their, in their schedule. Um, the way we look at it is the RTI, uh, for the most part is going to take priority over another elective that they would have. Um, again, uh, in sixth and seventh grade, they're marking period-based, so we certainly don't want to deny students an opportunity if they, you know, if they love PE, I try to work around PE and, you know, we don't want to take especially some of the students that desperately need it. But yes, it's, um, during the school day, during their specials, uh, they would be pulled from, let's say STEM and be given, uh, math RTI for that nine weeks. Um, what we do find sometimes, uh, is the students enjoy the extra help. It's a very small group, they get a ton of one-on-one attention from the, the math teacher or the ELA teacher and the students and their families and of course the teachers and all of us are very proud when we see the growth that they're making. And oftentimes, we find students asking if they can stay in RTI for more than one marking period. Um, and you know, and I've mentioned this at a previous board meeting, uh, some students, based on conversations with them, with their family, have elected to stay in RTI the entire school year.
Okay. Thank you. I know it's complicated, it's, I was curious how you're doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. At the high school, MTSS, uh, it is embedded into our curriculum. For example, our math teachers embed it into, uh, courses as they move forward up the progress, up the chain. So for example, we just, we just started an Algebra II Concepts course, so there's a lot of embedded, um, systems of support there, uh, where students may, may not have passed a Keystone Algebra exam or may have but still need help with algebra. Uh, so that's one example of how it's embedded at the high school. Social emotional learning, um, it was really, uh, unique last year how, um, our intervention specialists and our guidance team embedded that into lessons. And one stands out, uh, our psychology classes. So, uh, guidance staff, um, intervention specialists will go in and talk even more about how the brain works and how the, the brain, um, tricks you into thoughts and, and those types of things and how you can control a lot of those thoughts just by being aware that those things are happening. So it was embedded. We also have small groups. Um, a lot of our counselors, um, met, met with groups of students, um, over lunches or during study halls. They would pull kids out of a second period large study hall. Hey, who wants to be a part of the group at the beginning of the year? Um, and it, it was amazing, uh, sitting in, watching some of those and, and, and how the social emotional learning, kids essentially being aware of things and being aware of their, their minds, their, their bodies and, and social media and all those types of things of how that can affect their social emotional learning. Um, and it will continue to be a large part of our, of, of 2022. Uh, we have a, a course, um, the, the Guidance Pathways and Social Emotional Learning Course for all ninth graders. Uh, that will certainly be a large part because social emotional learning, um, there are standards that are close to being approved in Pennsylvania and we will, um, work, work with all of our ninth graders to make sure that they meet those standards as well. Career pathways, um, I, I believe you're all aware of where we are with career pathways. Um, that is in place for the class of 2026. Uh, we do have those pathways. We are also in the process of possibly adding a child, childcare SIP, working with our Head Start and some other, um, some other local agencies to try to get our own students trained, certified, and then also give back when we talk about instructional, um, aides or pairs, a shortage there. Uh, you know, we can certainly have, um, have seniors when they graduate leave with competencies or leave with training, um, to, to fill some of those roles. And that has happened, I've seen that happen. Um, students who had co-op with you, Linda, come, come and then become pairs, um, here at the, at the primary school soon after they graduated. So clearly pathways, um, is a direction, uh, that the high school, there's been a lot of curriculum work. Um, in, in particular, our social studies has taken a, um, a huge look at their curriculum. And I, I know talking with Mr. Mathias when he originally did the training with us and, and led us through a lot of professional development, um, the, the discussion of rigor and relevance in all of our classes. Um, and that was part of what you said in your presentation today, uh, whether that's, um, AP statistics, how are statistics going to be helpful in everything that we do and all of our jobs and all of our careers? And then talk about that, you know, where is, what, where are their statistics in the medical field and the engineering field and so on and so forth? Um, so, you know, I, I think that's important as we move forward, that rigor and relevance piece. Um, and then APL, some of our teachers are trained in APL. Um, like Dave said, as, um, the training stopped, um, a lot of our teachers stopped getting trained, but we do have teachers who are trained. I believe we had anywhere from five to seven at the high school trained, uh, with additional signed up right before COVID hit and then there was no APL trainings for a while. And then I'll turn it over to Bobby, um, talk about PBIS.
Yeah, so similar to, uh, some of the other schools, uh, we have a, um, acronym as well. Ours is PRIDE, uh, which is, uh, students are prepared, uh, being prepared, respectful, inclusive, dependable, and then they demonstrate excellence in the classroom. Um, and just, uh, throughout their, uh, their school day. Uh, so one of the, we hold, uh, different events throughout the school year. Um, last year, we had, uh, three events throughout the school year, but then also we have some incentives for the students. Um, we also have what are called pride cards, um, which allow teachers, or I'm sorry, uh, teachers to, uh, write cards, uh, home to, uh, their parents, just to kind of highlight some things that might be going on throughout the day that they want to just acknowledge the students for. Um, uh, over the course of the summer here, I've met with, uh, teachers in terms of developing, um, another event, uh, that we could hold, um, in the spring, uh, next year, so we're hoping to do something like that, um, to help, you know, kind of build some of these different events and things like that, to help the students have relationships with other students and kind of, um, and build, uh, a culture of, um, uh, like I said, pride, uh, for, uh, the program. And then also, not only that, we have a grade level, uh, teacher meetings, um, which basically allow teachers to, um, express concerns that they have with, uh, behaviors of different students in the classroom or just other concerns that they might have for certain students. Uh, we have, uh, obviously four, uh, meetings and then we'll have them, uh, once a month to be able to discuss those things with them. Um, and then that way everyone's acknowledging, uh, that maybe a particular student's having struggles and then that obviously, uh, translate that to the, um, guidance as well, um, in case they need to, like I said, intervene or right up the cases.
Can I just add one thing? Those, those morning meetings, um, so they happen twice a month. We have meetings, like the middle school, when I was at the middle school, we would have grade level meetings or department meetings. We have those now at the high school for 30 minutes at the beginning of every day. Um, some days are for our SAP team, but most of the days are talking about grade level meetings, department meetings about students. So where some, you know, at the middle school, a lot of times because it's team, they're allowed to do that, uh, that 30 minutes we have at the beginning of day, the contractual time for teachers before students come has been valuable to talk about kids and talk about interventions. Our guidance counselors sit in every one of those, our intervention specialist sits in every one of those, and a lot of our groups come out of those. So you find out which kids might work well together and which kids maybe don't, and then you pull them out of time in the day that they might have available through study halls or through the end of the day for some of those groups. So it's actually been very beneficial.
Can I, can I ask you a question, Mr. Crum? This is 2223, is this the last year of a three-year update then? So it's 2021, 21, 22, 23, so then the new one will trump this one.
Fall and fall in 2023.
And that's, that's due, you had said, okay.
In March.
Okay.
So yes, I'm glad you said that. These have been the bowls for three years.
Right.
This is the upcoming third year of the bowl.
Got it, okay, thank you.
All right, so now we are in planning for the new comprehensive. New comprehensive plan. This timeline, I put tentative because this is from PDE. It was originally to be, uh, approved in November and with COVID, they changed it. They have published this timeline as a recommendation. I'm going to be honest with you, this is a really short timeline. I was, I was surprised, um, how short this timeline is. Um, so right now, uh, the principals are working towards their building level sections regarding school planning. So the, the, each individual building does not need to do their own plan, but it's a worthwhile exercise for them to go through those questions and self-assessment to see areas that they feel that they need. So that's kind of where we are right now. In the fall, the steering committee members, uh, are supposed to meet in September and November about the plan. And then again, in winter, to finalize the plan in February. So I'm honestly looking at a schedule of a September meeting, a November meeting, a January meeting, and then a February meeting for approval because there's a lot in this plan. And a, a lot of the work is done in the background because again, you, we, we sit as, as administrators and say, is our curriculum aligned? Is this and that? We have to go do that and there are a number of things you have to do. But I think it's really important that the committee meets and meets with the people working on the plan and, and gives their input. So right now, with Mr. Mathias, we're working on some timelines. I will get that out to you. Um, there's, there's also an IU training on September 20th that I really want to go to before I commit too much to see what, what has changed and what they're doing. I'm also a little concerned that with COVID, they're going to push it off again, which won't be a bad thing, but they don't change the timelines afterwards. So if they push it off longer, then the plan is, is only a couple of years. So, so, uh, if it sounds like there's not, there's a whole lot of moving parts and I don't know a lot, you would be right because there does, and I, apparently not working didn't matter, there's not a lot to tell, I learned the other day. So I'll keep you up to date on this and especially those on the comprehensive plan committee. Um, I think we have those three board members. Here, would you go to the next slide? The two things I want to talk to you about is, number one, the planning committee. That has to be board-approved. So we are in the process right now of talking, and, and the committee are people who have been on it and then you replace people as they go off because you want your comprehensive plan to be an ongoing committee of people. You don't want new committee every three years. That, you want them to know what's going on and why you're doing what you're doing. But that still means half of the committee is not here anymore or doesn't want to participate. So we are right now in the process of pulling the committee together. Next Monday, your board meeting, I'm going to have a committee for you to approve. We might be missing some people, but that's okay. I'll bring them later on. But we want to get that piece done, I think that's very important. So you will get that next Monday. And just so you know, the committee is made up, uh, if you take a look at it, it's a diverse group of stakeholders and it involves teachers, administrators, parents, um, community members. Uh, so it involves a number of people. So we will, we will get that to you for approval and that will be great to have that done. And then on the next, next slide, all right, the other very big piece. And you're smiling, Mr. Brookhart, because I know you know exactly where this is. So if you've ever been part of doing a mission or vision statement with an organization, has anyone ever been part of that? So you know what that entails. That entails sometimes a year worth of meetings and collaboration and lots of white paper all over the place. And we brought in someone from Bloomsburg University when we did ours to lead ours and we, we took an entire year to do it. When Danville did this, they took quite a bit of time to come up with this mission and vision statement. They put a lot of energy into it and this was just written for this last comprehensive plan, I've been told. It is my recommendation to you to approve this as the mission and vision for this next plan. Number one, um, the time that it takes to do that, it, it, it's almost impossible. But I think more important than that, you have new board members, a new superintendent coming on, a new business manager and a new director of curriculum. So to do this prior to all of those people sitting at the table, I think is a little premature. So I'm going to request that I, you're going to get this in a document next Monday with the guy, I think the guiding principles, can you slip to the next one, Jeff? Um, and then their, their core beliefs, they were also part of that discussion. Um, I'm going to bring that to you next Monday for you to approve. And then this can go into the comprehensive plan and then this might be something when you have your new superintendent in place and new director of curriculum, that maybe you want to review that. But that has to be done a good year, year and a half before that plan's due. That's a, that's a very, very big piece. Okay, so if that's okay, I'm going to bring that to you next Monday. All right, Jeff, I think that's it. And we'll keep you updated. What, I know, lot to do, that's okay. You know, okay, you know what the hardest part of doing all of this was getting the login? Do you know how hard it's been to get logins? We, we run around like, am I right? She's the queen of getting us logins, I will tell you, for getting the logins. Okay, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent, appreciate it. Further comments from the board? Ready to move on? Number six, Buildings and Grounds Committee, we have renovation updates.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, we'll start with Liberty Valley, give you an idea of where we're at. By the end of the day... By the end of the day tomorrow, we should have 28 classrooms completely finished as far as floor waxes, ceiling tiles were in, new LED lighting's in. Hopefully by the end of next week, we have the balance of the classrooms done. We have, we are planning on putting the furniture back this coming Thursday. We're going to utilize some efforts of the local football team and our custodial staff and we're going to repopulate the furniture back into the classrooms. I would say by the end of next week, we should have the faculty lounge, the nurses area and the balance of the classrooms completed. So looking over the broad schedule, as far as preparation for the classrooms, I'd say we're probably actually a week ahead of schedule for what we're doing. We are still going to have problems with electrical switches that are on order. Because of logistics, we're still going to have issues with the unit ventilators, but we will open school on time, ceilings in, lights on. Everything is in pretty good shape out there. We're going to try to get Mr. Gump into his classroom the week of the 15th, if at all possible. And the paving will start on Monday, the 15th. So, and that should take about a week. Switching to the middle school, the, we had a little snag. We have a little pipe repair going on down there and an inlet, but the contractor's still on schedule for August, the 10th to have the paving completed down there. As far as a primary school goes, if you looked at all the, at the work that's, that's going on in the office and the cafeteria, by the end of next week, we'll probably be at the 90% point. By the end of the following week, the week of the 19th, the primary school should be just about complete as far as the contractors. Now, we're still looking at putting some carpet in, which is outside of the contract in the head start area and the admin offices. But that's it. It's, things are moving along pretty good as far as the summertime schedule. No snags, no hurdles. We'll be open on time. We may have to control the lights at the breaker panels and some, some small incidental things, but we're going to try and get the classrooms back to the teachers, hopefully a week and a half maybe in advance so they can get in, get comfortable with their classrooms. Other than that, we're in good shape.
Can I just ask a question about the middle school?
Yeah.
There was a significant concern when you talked to us about this last time about how much you would have to dig down and take off.
Yes.
In order, and it at least doesn't appear driving by that they had to go that deep.
They actually did. They went down, I think somewhere in a neighborhood of eight to 12 inches, somewhere around the 10-inch mark. But what they do, they, they, they take certain amount of the macadam away and then they bring back a certain amount of stone in Portland. What they do basically, if you went by the job site, it looked like there was about four inches of Portland on the stone and they have the equipment that blends that in with water. That's what creates the bridge for the full depth reclamation. And if you walk down there now, it's like walking on concrete. It's a solid, solid surface. We'll get another three inches of macadam on top, two base, one topping. And the, the grade level will be back where we started from.
So the only reason I was asking is because there was concern, we had the whole discussion about doing the middle school, about the large contingency that had been attached. And the reason that contingency was told to us was that they felt that they would have to go very, very deep and take out quite a bit of material.
Right.
And so I'm just trying to get a feel for.
Best far, we haven't gotten into the contingency.
Okay.
We've had a few little snags that we have allowances for.
Sure.
So we haven't touched that. Basically, we're close to the same on the primary school. As far as the allowances go, we, we'll use the allowances before we get into the contingency, barring some more, or any unforeseen issues. I think financially, we're in good shape.
And I just wanted to make sure it was restated clearly for anyone going to Liberty Valley, that the school will open on time?
It is going to open on time.
Okay. Because there was substantial rumors going around.
Well, there always is with any construction project.
I just wanted to make sure they were quashed and that everyone knew.
Yeah. If you, if you looked at, you can't tell from the outside of the building.
Correct.
What's going on. And there, right now, they're in the process of paving. That'll be the week of the 15th. More than likely by the end of the week. If they're not completed, they'll be 90% done.
Fantastic.
Goes very fast. So I think we're in really, really good shape as far as construction goes.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions? Comments? Okay. Still within Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Reichert, anything else? Nothing else submitted? You okay if we move on? You're the chair of that, I believe, right? We're good to move on? Okay. Number seven, Athletics and Extracurricular Activities Committee. Mr. Vognitz is the chair. We have various items and concerns related to athletics and extracurricular activities, including two policies. Mr. Vognitz, you're up.
Well, Mr. Brookhart, I'm going to lead the policies to you to go under policies.
Okay. Are you going to start with those or do you want to start?
I'll start with athletic committees.
Okay, go ahead.
Do we have a status on the cheerleading advisor?
Yes, you'll have a candidate Monday.
Okay. Girls tennis coach. I have not seen any posting.
Go ahead. So the position was posted on, on our website, I believe, and there is zero applicants at this time.
Okay.
What, we're scrounging.
Oh, I was going to ask what the contingency plan is.
And Mr. Wing can go into some detail. He's talked to me about it, but different places they're looking to try to and persons they're talking to.
Without throwing names out there.
We have, between myself and Brian Albertson, I contacted Susquehanna University, Bloomsburg University, the Williamsport Tennis Club. They've all posted it in their facility or on their website. He has contacted at least one or two other place. I actually took the class of 1992, around a tour of the building. And there's a ten, former tennis player, graduated 1992, who I'm still actively trying to recruit. Our tennis coach, those who you don't know, moved to Colorado. There was talk possibly about coming back, but she still has not. So we do have contingency. We, you know, we don't want to let the girls not have an opportunity. So we do have a contingency and we'll talk to Mr. Mathias about that and hopefully have someone on for approval in August 8th board meeting, whether that's our contingency or whether that is someone else.
When do fall starts? Sports start practice?
So heat acclimation for football starts Monday, the 8th. The other sports start, I believe, the next week.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wing, if you'd just please stay standing. Got a couple of questions for you. The status of the Athletic Hall of Fame, what's the role of the board, the administration, the district, the community input? And do, have we started receiving any donations?
Yes, thank you. We did receive some donations. I wrote thank you notes back, so I do appreciate it. I know you were instrumental in, in getting some of those, so thank you. I believe we received three, if I can remember correctly, it was either two or three. I know they, some of them went right to our business administration office and I didn't see some of those, but I believe I wrote thank you notes for two or three of those.
And are we setting up a individual account for the Athletic Hall of Fame?
Yes, there is an account set up.
Okay. Back in April, we talked about, at the Athletic Committee, about a survey for the interest of volleyball.
Okay. I, I briefly remember that and probably with the crossover of Chris, I can forward that on to Brian Albertson, our new AD, to, to have that sent out.
Okay. Coaches, do we have demo multi-year agreements and how are those decisions recommended?
So yes, our coaches, some of them are on one year, some of them are, I don't know if there's any on two, but I believe they're one year and three year. Those were discussed in the past with recommendations based off evaluations to the superintendent. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add.
I do. One thing I discovered was, I want to phrase this correctly. So if I, if I'm sitting with Terry and we're working on establishing the board agenda, of course, we're looking for, you know, what needs to go on the agenda and that includes hires. Okay? And what we're discovering is that in the past, sometimes coaches would come through one channel and sometimes it would come through another channel. My opinion is that every hire needs to go through the exact same channel. And say the word channel, what I'm referring to is a workflow that has to go through the HR director's office. Now here's why. That person is an expert at scanning for various things, including clearances. Clearances. And so when we discovered that, I immediately talked to Mr. Albertson and he's like, yep, totally agree. And for example, we talked about cheerleading earlier, that immediately came through that channel. So this is to, to, to report to the board that that was something we discovered was perhaps a weakness, but we are now going to use a similar workflow for all employees, including coaches and extracurriculars.
All right. Schedule in the weight, weight room? Has that been fair, equal use for all sports and genders?
I know.
I mean, I know that was a big issue.
Yeah, I know Mr. Albertson is working with the coaches in the fall to see times and usage in, in scheduling the weight room. And then we'll progress to winter and spring. But that was part of the discussion. I was, I was at the fall coaches meeting and I was part of that discussion.
Okay. This was a question brought to me by another board member for athletics. What is the roles of the principals in athletics?
So the high school principal.
High school, middle school.
So the high school principal, I guess it would vary. So we are involved in the P-hack. So we do have P-hacks, so the Heartland Conference meetings that we do go to. And then we are ultimately the ones in charge of that based off of PIAA guidelines. Say the high school principal oversees athletics.
The PIAA rules, and you are a member of the PIAA, are very clear that the principal in charge of the grade level of the program is in charge of the program for purposes of PIAA regulations.
And then Mr. Snover would be in charge of it at the middle school.
All right. So the athletic director will report to?
Definitely.
Both of them?
Definitely.
Okay. Or coach, do, how much play does, I mean, how much role does the coaches have in developing their own schedules?
I guess it depends on the sport. Most sports, they are regulated by the P-hack and there are signers for most of those sports. One of those sports that I know that we are not a member because there's not a membership in the P-hack is lacrosse. There's not enough members for the P-hack, but I believe every other sport has a signers for their league contests. For their non-league contests, that's where the athletic director would sit down and talk with the coach and say, hey, who do you want to play? Or I have an athletic director reach out to me from Mount Carmel, do you want to play them? They're not in your league, do you want to play them in girls basketball? So there's a, there are league events that are scheduled and have to be upheld because that's part of our league that you have to play those games and those events. But then there's additionally your non-league contests. So, and it, and it varies on each sport too. So it's a good question. Some sports, there's three divisions and there's more openings. For example, basketball has moved to three divisions in, in the P-hack. So there's more non-conference where let's say another sport might have only two divisions and there's less of those openings. So there's less availability. But many times in my experience, the athletic director has sat down with the coach and said, you have 11 conference games, you have 22 total games that you can play. Do you have any idea who you might want to play in those other 11 games? I'm not saying that's how it always works out. I'm not part of every one of those conversations, but in my experience, that's how it's worked out of all the districts I've been at, including this one.
Okay. Status of the swimming record board?
Yes. So we, there was a, a letter that we, I believe, forwarded or came through you, Mr. Mathias, for donations. I believe that was ordered. And, and again, I'm trying to go back to what Chris told me before he left, but I believe it was ordered and should be in place for the, for the winner. I don't know if it's been delivered. I, I don't know the status of if it's been here or not, but I believe it was ordered and then the donations, we're going to go back and pay retroactively for those. That's my recollection of what that.
It was ordered and paid for out of school funds with the idea that as the donations came in, it would then reimburse those school funds. That way it could get moving.
The reason I'm asking that is I don't recall us as a board voting on purchasing the school board record. The record board. I believe it's been at, brought up at Athletic Committee, but not brought to us as a board to approve that purchase.
I don't, I don't recall. Again, that was something I wasn't.
The one we approved, forgot, was it the basketball scoreboard?
Yeah, that was your, the basketball announce.
There was one scoreboard that we approved, but that was not from the school budget. It was from the money that's left over from funds from the, what was the?
That was.
The classes.
The classes.
Yeah.
That was, that was basketball and wrestling. Swimming, we can double check and we can get back to you of, of how that was ordered. Again, I, I don't, that was not through me.
Yeah, I don't.
All those purchases don't come through the principal.
I remember coming up to Mr. Vognitz and I, I don't recall.
Okay.
From who or where, but it did come up.
Two more items. There's an interest in indoor track. This was brought up back in April also. Have we moved?
We, we currently do offer indoor winter track. So that is something we've done for years.
As a sport itself?
I don't believe it is a PIAA sport, so I believe it's run as a club. So I don't think there is indoor winter track and field as a sport. I believe it's a club in throughout the PIAA. But I can check on that. Again, I don't know all the sports, but I believe it is a club.
And this is coming from the community, I mean, and myself. I'm, I'm a salesman, so I travel a lot. We have a lot of fencing around our fields. Can we possibly look at an avenue of sponsoring advertising?
Right there is the expert. I've been at Central and he can speak to that.
We can talk about it.
I mean, that's easy income coming into the district revenue.
We can absolutely talk about it because you're right. It's a potential income source. You want to, I think, I think, you want to have a consistent approach to that. So that's why it would require a number of conversations and then bring that back to you and have you vet that and approve that. What I, what I would suggest you not do is just this haphazard approach that, hey, baseball boosters, you could do this and football, soccer, lacrosse, you can do that.
Right. We know that you, you have done it at Central. I mean, I know Wayne has, Berwick has done it also. So I mean, those are the two districts that, you know, you should look at for experience.
I'd love to take credit, but Berwick, it predated me. They've been doing it since the mid 90s. They bring in $30, $35,000 a year. I know you.
Well, we brought in about 700, $800,000.
You're doing a different path.
Which is, which is why it's a conversation.
Right.
You have to kind of frame a objective and how do you frame it?
Yeah, we didn't solicit donations. We just did straight signs. But yeah, I don't want to let that hanging. I think it's a great idea and I guess we'll have to decide how we want to proceed with it. Do you have any request of how you would like us to move on this? Now you have two people here that have been involved in it.
I mean, I, I think it's a great idea and it will help alleviate some pressure on the budget.
Yeah. You're talking, you know, I say that per year, you're taking that over 20, 25 years. It ends up into some big money and Harry's had the experience. I know William's bought, I think they sold rights to a stadium. I'm not saying that's something we should do, but there are a lot of different ways this can go. And that goes back to your point to not just go off on some tangent, let's get a plan in place if we're going to do it.
Correct. I can start to think about that.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any else, Mr. Vognitz? Okay. I'll step in on the facility, I'm sorry, the.
Wait, is there anything we need to pay special attention to these two policies?
That's where I was going next, yeah. That's where I was going next, yeah. Yeah, the 123, I found what I was looking for, so, uh, it was about the nexus with what happens in athletics with a student and it's in our policy. I don't know if you're, when there's an issue with a student, it's a, in a, a sport, we do address that in our policy. Some do, some don't, so.
So, disciplinary.
Yes, exactly. Uh, 707, and you and I talked about this, Mr. Mathias, our policy on use of school facilities is probably significantly skimpier than what I've seen other places. Uh, would you be willing to, Terry, maybe put a pen link out so we can look at some others?
Yes.
And the full board off to decide if they want to really get into this and make it a, a policy change, but.
Yes, and to share with everyone what Mr. Brookard, Brookhart and I spoke about, um, there are use of facilities policies that clearly list, uh, who's eligible, who's not eligible, but then also if you are eligible, what are the parameters and what are the charges? And, uh, that can come in tiers. Nonprofits could be a certain charge, for-profits could be a certain charge, uh, the number of, of participants, you know, maybe it's a small group versus a large group could be a different charge and so forth. So, it's a way to clearly delineate when an application then comes in to the persons in charge. They can look directly at that document and say, okay, uh, yes or no, and how much? And of course, that's based on board approval.
And this would simply be gathering information, doesn't move unless we think it should.
Sure.
Um, I'd like to add on to that, uh, just the, it's not the policy itself, it's about the access to, to the information to release, the, you know, request the use of the fields. It's not easily accessible on the website. I mean, I've, me personally, I've had to use that form. Um, it's not easy for me, my, my age. I know the former director of Veterans Affairs, he was directed to use it, he couldn't find it. Uh, we need to make it more accessible for the community to be able to get to.
So, Mr. Ryan and I actually had a conversation, what's today, Monday, last week, uh, where we talked about the website as a communication tool. Now, by the way, I'm the guy that throws out the thoughts and ideas, he's the expert on the technology, so I try to frame it that way. Um, so, a, a, and by the way, we have the administration right now working on updating, deleting things that are dated and updating relevant information. And there's lots of relevant information. You know, the status of Liberty Valley School is relevant information for someone going on the website. Finding a form is relevant information. So, we've talked about all of that. We did talk a little bit about, well gee, when you look at the website, is this something that should be totally remodeled? Well, maybe, but not in August.
Right.
Okay? So, where he and I left that was, we're going to attempt to update the current structure the best we can. And then, uh, if over time, we get an opportunity to make it just more functional, to your point, that's some, again, he's the expert. So, I'm not going to sit there and say, well, move this here and move that there and shift all this around. He'll come to me when he thinks he's got something that's doable.
Right.
If that makes sense. Is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Athletics activities? Number eight, personnel.
Uh, we simply listed for you, though, by the way, you heard Mr. Gump speak to you two weeks ago, uh, three, three weeks ago, about, uh, where we were on a number of the hires. We have bulleted the list of, on those things that the administration is working on right now. Uh, we expect, and by the way, they can jump in here, but we expect to have candidates in most, if not all of these areas for you for next Monday. So, remember what this meeting's about. It's to communicate what next Monday's agenda will look like and what we're suggesting is you're going to have a number of candidates to be hired. Next Monday, you will get the data the same way you always do. Uh, when Terry releases the, um, um, agenda to you, of course, you have a, a place that you can go check out, uh, files and so forth, that will be available at that time. If you have questions now, of course, we'll field those.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Policy discussion, this one's mine, a few of these I don't think we need to get into any detail on because, uh, they're probably more pertinent when there's a business manager hired. That would be 601, 602, 603, and 604. Uh, I did want to ask Mr. Mathias, and I, I know you're watching these things closely, we got a new budget from the state. Uh, there are various funding sources out there that need to go in specific directions that, uh, I don't know if you need discussion of the board before we do any of that, or is that something that right now can be handled administratively?
So far, so good. There are, uh, I think I mentioned the last meeting, two new grants that are out there that we expect to get. Uh, as you know, Mr. Brookhart, the state oftentimes will clarify or define very clear codes that have to be used. And by the way, grants are no big deal in terms of your bottom line, because when you budget a grant, you put the money in the revenue side and take it out the expenditure side. It's just bigger numbers, is all it is, it's a perfect match. But to Mr. Brookhart's point, I think, is we have to make sure we code those properly.
Right.
If we find that we need to have the board approve a special code, we will come to you. Right now, I'm saying so far, so good.
That's what I was asking, okay, thank you. Uh, 006 meetings, just wanted to make sure the board's aware, we approved the first reading of 006, we never approved the second reading of 006, so that is still out there hanging, uh, and probably something we should address certainly before reorganization in December as we move forward. I know there was some discussion about Dr. Green and the communication policy that you brought. I had questioned the appointment of board members and the fact that the PSA, PSBA, not our own people, citations did ma, did not match the school code. Mr. Mathias, I know you're really strong with policy, I'd love to get your interpretation on that. Uh, they actually cited something that didn't refer to, that wasn't the policy at all. So, we've had a first reading, we have now had a second reading, and that's 006, so you're aware that the old policy is still in place on 006, nothing has been changed.
Are you ready for a final vote?
Well, no, I think there are a few things that still need to be.
Okay.
Uh, looked at, and I'm asking if you'd be willing to do that. Does anybody else have any comments or questions on that?
But, I'm sorry, excuse me, I didn't follow what you said about a citation?
There's, there's, every time you look at the, uh, online PSBA policies, there will be little numbers that refer to things in the school code or regulations.
Yeah.
If you look at the one on appointment of board members, which I did because I was appointed and so was Dr. Green back in February, and you click on the first one, it has nothing to do with the appointment of board members. And if you click on the second one, I didn't find anything on that one either. And I'm not saying this has anything to do with our administration, it doesn't. These came from PSBA. I think they incorrectly cited something. And I brought that up way back and, um, we approved it one time, but I think we should at least take a look at that for the second time. And if you have comments, questions, concerns, let me know. I'm just asking if I can get a second set of eyes on this because it never was looked at previously.
And that should be an easy citation.
Yeah.
Because it's right in the school code and hasn't changed in 70 years.
I looked at it several times to make sure I wasn't missing something, and every time I looked at it, it's not there.
And you know I'm always happy to revisit 006.
And if the board wants to push through with this, that's fine, we said that at that time, but, uh, I wasn't comfortable with it. There are also a lot of misspellings, and I'm not going to get all hung up on a misspelling or two, but there were several, like public was spelled with an H and things like that, I just want to get them right.
We'll check it out.
Okay, yeah.
This is something that actually cycles sort of back into policy. Um, we had had several discussions surrounding communications plan and our, and setting the communications policy. And so, Dr. Mathias, can you give us a little bit of an update on that?
Sure, so, uh, I know internally, uh, the staff has been working on the communications plan. In fact, Mr. Varholic, a week or so ago, gave me a document to look at where this, uh, basically where we are is we need the board to say, okay, administration, go ahead, come up with a finalized document that we can present back to the board. Now, the reason that, you might think the answer to that is obvious, uh, but with a new superintendent search starting and all that, your other option, of course, is to wait until you have a new superintendent in place before we proceed on that, or we can proceed right now. So, that would be the guidance we'd be looking for.
Okay. And the communication plan does not have to be in 006. They don't have to meld together. That can be either put in place somewhere else or not at all.
So, to Dr. Green's point, if the, the board's okay, what we can do is place that discussion for a final decision on your August 8th agenda, to provide the administration with guidance. Do you want us to proceed, or do you want us to wait? That would be the question.
I don't think it hurts to have the discussion, and even if we put a communications plan in place, we can always revisit it when the new super comes. It'd be nice to have some good guidelines, and it sounds like what the staff has produced is very similar to the original document that I circulated. And so, I'd really like to see some of those things pushed forward because one of the big problem issues is transparency of communication, this links back to the website and everything else that you're discussing.
Right. The plan itself may not be to you, August 6th.
That's fine.
Okay.
Dr. Katarz.
Uh, do we have any reason to wait for a superintendent, to a new superintendent? This is something that was, the board will decide to put anyway, so I feel like we can't just proceed.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, it's, it's a necessity and it's something that would have done it anyway, so.
Right.
Fine, very good.
Okay. Uh, we have number 126, uh, class size and policy pretty clearly states that the administration, along with the staff and the board, should be determining plot, class size. There is some verbiage below that. I, each year here, and I've said these things as a former superintendent, that 70% of our budget is set with salary and benefits. Well, that is very much dependent on what the class, class sizes are. I've heard from our board, we want more teachers, smaller class sizes. I know I've heard that from some of our administration, certainly understand that. I've heard that, you know, we need to try to find ways to reduce. I think those discussions and one of the policies also says the budgeting process is year-long, that we need to have those discussions. And Mr. Mathias and I talked about this as well. Could you talk about a little bit about what you do and what you told me?
Yes, so you actually heard me earlier say that one of the, uh, reports I want to give you is a report on enrollment and staffing, and that would take a historical look at enrollment and also, then also give you information on where you stand right now, what are the projections for next year, and how's the district staffed, and that would essentially be background information as you would enter your budget conversations. So, normally, in my past, this would be a report I would deliver in February. In this case, of course, you're going to get it before February because I won't be sitting in this chair in February. Uh, but, but once you get that information, then of course, you can utilize that. Uh, I do not, I'm, I'm going to preface this next statement with, I do not know what's in your collective bargaining agreement, okay? So, collective bargaining agreements should always be respected and, uh, followed, they're, they're contracts, they're agreements, you have to follow them. But what I would say is you should not have a policy on class size. Class size is an administrative determination, it should not be guided by anything else other than your administration and your board, and if you were asking me my opinion, wiping a clean slate, if you could, I don't know if you can, you don't have a policy on class size.
There's also some really odd verbiage below it, I don't know where it came from, Mr. Mathias, and if you get a chance, take a look at 126 or any of our board members, it's, uh, they have some, some numbers in there, but they're, it just is odd how it got there.
I'm not to, I'm not suggesting you shouldn't follow research.
Yeah.
And what's best for kids, you would certainly follow that.
So, these policies mostly come from the PSBA, right? So, they, they come like an open framework type of thing and you fill your, uh, individual needs in there.
Primarily, and I'll turn things over to you then, Mr. Mathias, if you're going to add something. Primarily, that is true, but sometimes there's something that happens in a district that prompts a policy development that when you look at it years later, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, case in point, this, this document's accurate and reflective of the reality, it says last revised, May 12, 2015.
Yeah.
And then they have numbers to define some metrics by which we're supposed to govern our responsibilities.
Which one is that, Mr. Huron?
126.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I'm talking about.
I mean, it was revised seven years ago and there's numbers in here dictating class size. Obviously, it hasn't been either paid attention to or hasn't been revised.
Somebody, at some point.
So, does it really have value?
At some point, it made sense to somebody.
Seven years old.
It doesn't make a lot of sense anymore.
So, policies are really big issue, and there's lots of them, and they guide the district, and there gets to be a point where, um, uh, the leadership of the school district makes a decision that investing in another group, in this case, PSBA, uh, to provide you with a catalog of them is easier, is that a fair word? Than working through them individually on your own. And there is some basis in that, in that sometimes changes in the legislation come so quickly that, you know, it's like a shotgun coming at you, if you will, and it's hard to keep up. Uh, so that's what happens is, oh, here's a big pile of them from PSBA, let's just adopt them. But then what happens is they don't necessarily, uh, have local nuance in it, which it absolutely should do, and they tend to lag over time. So, um, that is why, by the way, you should have an active policy committee who looks at those things and, you know, every month has a conversation about policy, what can we move forward?
And anyone's welcome. Right now, the policy committee is, consists of one person. If anyone else is interested or, or more people are interested, it'd be great to have more participation. Mr. Klauser would obviously have to appoint you, but, uh, it is, it is important. And, uh, then things get dated and then somebody wants to cite it and it can create some hard feelings and, uh, and maybe bad direction for board. Last thing I have here, kind of segueing into that, and again, I'm going to refer to Mr. Mathias as the acting superintendent ultimately on this, is number 304, employment of district staff. This was cited when we get into some of the discussions on the athletic director, when we tabled it. Uh, and I also wrote down here that the prior superintendent's contract makes reference to a attached job description on page 16, and it says there, arrange details for board interviewing of final applicants. And I think that created some, some hard feelings and maybe some situations that didn't need to exist. It looks to me, uh, under policy 304, administrative regulations were supposed to be developed, that maybe 304 and the superintendent's contract were in, were, were not necessarily in sync. Uh, and I think as we look ahead to hiring a new superintendent, the board needs to determine what role are they going to play? Are we going to have oversight by signing the interviews, or aren't we? Uh, we need to be consistent with that. Somebody had made a comment, which was a great one, why did we just decide this now? Why did this come up? Uh, good point, needs to be consistent, and as we develop the next superintendent's contract, I'm not quite sure how this job description got where it got, but it did. And there is a reference in the contract to it, which is odd too. So, I just think we should fix it, that's all. And decide what we're going to do and be consistent in everybody's best interests. Uh, and I thought that was important to bring up as soon as possible because I think that is one of those things that nobody necessarily's fault, but it will happen again if we don't clean up some of our, our documents. So, I'm referring to you once again, if you would take a look and, and see what your thoughts are.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions from the board on policy in 9.1? We'll move on. Number 9.2, health and safety plan, Mr. Mathias.
Yes, uh, we talked, uh, at our last meeting about the health and safety plan that is on the website. I mentioned to you at that time that is now a state regulation, I think it's state, I don't think it's federal, that it must be updated every six months. That actually, by the way, expired yesterday, but we'll do the best we can. So, I referred that to you, it was sent, Terry sent them to you, uh, looking for your input. If you have no input, by the adminis, by the way, the administration is fine with how it reads, they know a lot of thought went into that. Uh, we are good to have you re-approve, re-approve, uh, yes, re-approve it, uh, on August 8th. So, that would be our recommendation unless the board has additional thoughts. You do have additional thoughts?
No, no.
Okay, very good.
Good one.
So, hearing none, we will have that on your agenda, August 8th.
Okay. Next, ten. Health and wellness.
I was appointed to this two cycles ago and we have yet to have an actual meeting, so this is something that we should actually sit down and discuss, especially with the upcoming grant that you're working on that may have some relevance in this domain. And I certainly have some ideas of how to sort of work with this and move forward, so we should think about who should actually sit and work on this.
So, to Dr. Green's point, there is a 100 and I believe $31,000 grant that was made available to us through, um, the general assembly. The application is due at the end of August. Look at the calendar, okay, the end of August. Uh, so, we have to do some work on determining what are our priorities in this grant. Um, we, I am still looking for guidance, and I don't, by the way, I don't think that's, I'm alone in that regard. Uh, I mean, from PDE on what the application is to entail, we did get some information over the weekend that there's this tier concept, and essentially, it's, well, tier one are it's, well, tier one are these things you have to have in place, and tier two are higher level things you have to have in place, and if you don't have tier one things, that's what you should be focused on. Now, okay, and that gives us guidance, but I don't know if that's absolute, meaning if you don't have this, you have to get it, and you can't go into this. Internally, we will be talking, in fact, sent out an email today about some things we need to look at, and if anyone else is interested in weighing in, we will certainly be calling stakeholders in to weigh in. Again, I do not know the flexibility we'll have, but we're going to have to move this pretty quickly.
Health insurance?
As we, yeah, as we move toward the end here, I did want to clarify something on that. That committee you're talking about is the one with our association and our internal benefits.
Which one?
You probably don't, you're probably not even familiar with the other one. Ms. Cooper, I'm going to refer to you. The one with the trust. Know what I'm talking about? The medical trust through the IU, that you were on that committee?
I never went to any of the meetings, so I don't really know.
Right, but we need to get somebody established to be on. You and I talked about that, and I was going to do that.
I thought you were going to do that, yeah.
And I'm going to ask...
So, the trust has to do with the health insurance?
Yes.
Committee?
Yes. It does, okay.
And so, there's...
So, we have that covered, then?
Correct.
Through you.
I had sat in one and a half meetings surrounding this.
That's what I wanted to make sure of, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Because there's two different things. There's something contractually, where we need to work with our local association, and then there's the medical trust through the intermediate unit. Those are two different positions.
There's a focus group we're supposed to have that works in unison with the teachers.
That's in the contract, right?
Yeah.
Is that the one you're doing, Dr. Green? Is that the one you're referring to?
Yeah, so it's the contractual negotiations between the teachers and us, I'm looking at options in that context.
Okay. The other one is, the district has to have someone with the trust who we get our insurance through. They only meet quarterly, I believe, every three months, and I don't think you were involved in any life insurance for years. For a while, yeah. But anyway, we have to have somebody there as well, and we don't have to do that tonight, but I think, I talked to Mr. Klausert, I just don't know if we publicly made that determination. And for those that don't know what I'm talking about, our insurance is through the intermediate unit. Do you know the name of it, Harry? Central Suss Mahana, maybe, Trust?
No.
Anyway, we need a board member appointed there, and we'll have to make sure that that's done, because they're probably going to have a meeting soon. Okay. Let's go to, what are we at, 11? 11-1?
Yeah, that was 11.
That was 11-1, 12. Okay. Board concerns and items for next meeting? Anything? Dr. Katachi?
Yeah, just something to think about in terms of now, how does this committee of the whole work? How was it supposed to operate? So, those are conversations we need to have, yes, a lot of things.
So, you just witnessed?
Yep.
Okay? And keep in mind, we're all new to it.
Correct.
My first time, your first time.
Yes.
So, Jennifer's sitting over here and can weigh in if she feels she wants to, but basically, you have observed what a committee of the whole is. We have gone through areas that cover all committees in the district and did it in front of all of you.
Correct.
So, committees is the first part, whole is the second part. The value in doing that is, you've all heard all the presentations and all the discussions, and you don't have to ask questions of a committee member who sat in a committee that you weren't in. So, the positive potential outcome is that your next meeting, next Monday, may be dramatically shorter, because you've heard all the input. Okay? Now, so, and you heard me also say earlier that Mr. Klausert very much wanted to stay kind of committed to this until the board decided otherwise. So, that's why you saw it a little bit longer, and all these reports and so forth. The way it's supposed to work is, I think, the way you just saw it, where you heard lots of reports, asked lots of questions, got, you know, hopefully some answers, but didn't vote.
Correct.
You can't vote.
So, Dr. Mathias?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, so next time we have committee of whole, what might end up happening is, we may talk about policy 006 for voting on next time.
Yes.
And any changes that we want to make, we may make in 006. At least get a consensus about what those changes will be during the committee of the whole, and then we'll have presentations surrounding the curricular stuff, which we'll all listen to, which then in the next committee meeting, we'll be able to just vote on, because we've already heard it and we're willing to approve it.
Yeah, I should be more specific. I was concerned more about time, in terms of now, we have budget coming. Itself can take a lot, it just takes time. So, we have to have a mechanism of cutting things short, or apportioning more time for curriculum this time, next month for finance, next time for whatever it needs to be, is that...
And Mr. Klausert and I, as we work through it, will try to take that into account the best we can.
Okay.
We will try.
Mr. Mathias?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong? This still doesn't, as a committee as a whole, it still does not, if we need to have an emergency meeting in our own committees, it doesn't mean that we cannot.
Oh, no.
Correct.
Your separate committees, you can have your own separate meetings. Again, you have your own meeting scheduled. The committee of the whole is the opportunity for the entirety of the board to get together to discuss the agenda, ask any questions that they may have, so that when you come to the voting meeting the following week, it's a more streamlined process, so that any issues or directives to the administration to collect more information, provide more data to you, when you come to that voting meeting, that information is ready for you. So theoretically, by having the committee of the whole, even though it may be a longer meeting, when you come into the voting meeting the next week, everyone should be on the same page about the information that was available.
Yes, such as the budget coming up.
Correct.
You know, finance committee having their own meetings.
Curriculum comprehensive, you know, there's so many things that need to be done.
Can I clarify, too, that if there's a separate meeting, the athletic committee or the finance committee, we have a committee meeting tonight, there are nine of us here. There's no reason why, if you're not on that committee, you still cannot attend the meeting as long as you're not participating in a vote. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, the idea that we have a committee of three, and two other board members show up, we're now violating the sunshine law is not correct.
No.
It couldn't be, because we're here tonight.
They can participate. I would just recommend that with those separate committees, then, again, like you said, they'd be like a silent observer, so that that way, there's no sunshine violation of, you know, quorum decisions. But yes, they can certainly sit in and, you know, watch and observe.
And those meetings have to be publicly announced.
Yes, right, yeah, yeah. One other real quick benefit, I appreciate what you had to say, just, it's a real silly, simple little thing, but volleyball, for volleyball interests. Nobody here knew it was discussed in athletic committee.
April.
You guys may have 10, 15, 20 things, you're not going to bring them all back to us. Some of those things can slip, and now we're all here when we discuss the committee items, so there shouldn't be anything missed. Okay. Any other board concerns or items for the next meeting or for the agenda?
12.2.
I'm sorry. 12.1, okay, got it.
He's still in order, he's good.
Okay, do we need to do that?
Okay, so, number 12.2, here's why 12.2 is on.
I guess we do need to do it, okay, I see, yeah.
Because committee of the whole is new, Terry and I have to do an advertisement. We have to advertise these meetings. So, this one's advertised, next week's advertised, but we were looking at, by the way, you normally do this in December, reorganization, that's when it's normally done, okay? But I get it, there's some nuance here. Okay, so when you look forward, first Monday of the month is this, second Monday of the month is voting. September, first Monday of the month is Labor Day.
Labor Day.
So, before we take the time to advertise, we want to ask you, do you want to meet Labor Day night? Or, or would you like, before Terry and I advertise, a separate, unique date for the September 1st board meeting, like, for example, Tuesday?
Yep.
Now, technically, you can't decide it now, because you're not on a voting meeting, but when we put an agenda item on August 8th, we're going to put an agenda item on to advertise these meetings coming up, and you may see the first Tuesday in September rather than the first Monday. If you want to call me and discuss, feel free.
Okay.
How's that sound?
That sounds great. Okay. Now, any board concerns and items for the next meeting, agenda? Public comment?
Jessica?
No, you pressed that.
So, it goes green.
There's, you got it. Jessica Knopf, you see me all the time. So, just because you were talking about advertising for the meetings, and you brought up the committee meetings, are you, obviously, you're not having the committee meetings during the summer, I understand that. Are you still planning on having the committee meetings when school starts back up again? And are you going to have them at the same time that you were having them before, or are you going to advertise new ones? Because as you know, I like to be obnoxious and attend them all.
So, here's my answer, and these guys are my bosses, okay? Mr. Klausert very much wants to stay committed to the committee of the whole as a concept until it's proven that it doesn't work. So, as of this writing, right now, there are no committee meetings planned.
Okay.
However, you just heard Mr. Vognets talk about the need potentially for an emergency meeting. By the way, the definition of emergency is just that, okay? Those things can always happen. Oh, by the way, your voting meeting before the start of school is August 8th. Stuff may happen between August 8th and the start of school that requires your action, so be on your toes, okay, in case something like that were to happen. If there is, if the, any department, or, I'm sorry, chair of a committee wants to hold a meeting, it has to be advertised.
Correct.
Okay, has to be. So, they'll let us know, we'll send the advertisement out, it'll go on the website and wherever else we send it. This goes to communications plan, and we'll certainly let you know. But as of this writing, there are no committee meetings other than committee of the whole that are planned.
Do we do a district-wide notification of meetings, you know?
So, that's another thing Mr. Ryan and I talked about, is how can we improve that?
Yeah.
When you say district-wide notification, like, what are you referring to?
Well, I know we're talking to an instructional person here, do all of our teachers get it?
Yes, the teachers do get the, I'm also a parent.
Right.
Too, so, but I do know the teachers get the district-wide notifications as well. So, I can attest to that.
And I know we have a tool to get things out to the community as well, if that's something we choose to do.
I would like to just put my last two cents in, to remind the board that, even when you agreed to the committee of the whole, that the public comment in the committee meetings was very valuable, and we appreciated the openness of being able to make comment during those committee meetings, because it was a lot less formal, and I know that a lot of us appreciated that. As you can see, I'm the only one here. So, and you know I will be the only one here, but I'm only one person, and we got a lot more people at those committee meetings. So, I just would like to remind the board of that. Thank you.
Well, can, may I also add something? And this, I think, this is one of these things that may have value, and again...
Oh, I think it does have value, I don't mean that.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't mean that. So, the board has a policy, okay, that I call the chain of command policy, okay? It's policy 906 or something like that. And what it basically says is, if a, if anyone has an issue, they're supposed to direct it to the area of concern.
Yes, I've read it, because I'm a teacher, and I always love it when my parents come to me first.
So, to the board members, let's me do this example. So, you're at home, and there's a knock at the door, or your phone rings, or you get a text, and it's your next-door neighbor. And the next-door neighbor says to you, "The math teacher's giving my kid too much homework." Or, "The basketball coach isn't playing my kid enough." Or, "The English teacher isn't grading the paper." Okay? Board members, based on your policy, what are you supposed to do?
Redirect, so the family, the parents should talk to the teacher first.
You are supposed, that's exactly right. You are supposed to say to them, "Have you talked to the teacher or coach?" And if the answer's "no," you say, "Talk to the teacher." That's it, you're done. Now, by the way, there is another piece to it, because I have a contract that you approve that says, "If you have an issue, you are to let me know." So, if you have an issue, and you haven't let me know, you're supposed to, okay? Now, why is that? First of all, the first part of it is, that 90, as, you as a teacher, if a parent calls you and says, "Hey, what's going on with my kid? Can you solve the problem?" 99% of the time.
Absolutely.
There you go. And do you need a board member calling you to solve the problem?
No.
Not at all? And if I know, what I can do is go to the principal and say, "Hey, just so you know, this parent maybe has an issue, can you check on it?" Because if they've heard that 10 times, maybe a thing. If they've heard it once, it may be a misunderstanding, correct?
Correct.
Which it oftentimes is. So, I appreciate you letting me tell that story.
Okay, but let me come back to the committee meetings for just one second, because I didn't complain about them.
You said there's no freedom, there's not as much freedom to speak as it was in the smaller committee.
Right, but when I went to the committee meetings, did I complain?
Did you complain?
Yes. Did you guys have a...
No.
No, not once.
You might have heard me complain, but, that was different.
But, but we did have the chain of command at those committees.
Yes, and I did, I did go to the chain of command first, and then you heard me, but, that was different. That was a different circumstance. But I went to the committee meetings to be informed.
Awesome.
And that's why I enjoyed the committee meetings.
This goes to this.
They were informational, and that's why I thought everyone should be at the committee meetings, but that's the kind of person I am, because I'm a teacher, and I think everyone should be informed. I'm one of those people who thinks that if you're not informed, you don't get to complain. I tell my students that, too. So, that's just too...
That's why we're talking about a communications plan.
Correct. So, that's why I like the committee meetings, because I enjoyed going to them, and I enjoyed being informed.